Thank you for coming tonight. Roll call please, Mr. Tevez.
Dr. Corleone.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Kane.
Here.
Dr. Mudra.
Here.
Ms. Morel.
Here.
Oh.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mom. Here. And Miss Lake.
Here.
And Ms. Rock.
Here.
Warm up.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. This is the meeting. Mr. Tevez, these three speakers are going to be open to public speaking for the next eight minutes. The jury's in the public room anymore, and I'd like to ensure that the public will have a notice of contempt against the public body, which is a type of an ill intentioned act or act of honor. In court's conclusions, again, from Montpel Township Education, through this meeting, and Lucy, the meeting with the post of the Montpel Township School Building, along with the school, along with public library, along with township education, straight office building, along with public school website, and advertising. We'll hear now from our students. Jay, Genesee, thank you for being here tonight. For the sports, Leo Wiss and Alex Rager have made all team daily records for winter track. The girls and boys basketball team last week, each won their first state game in over thirty years. That was a great accomplishment for both teams. With their seasons having come to an end, this past Friday, winter sports are now open. Spring sports are now beginning full practices, and I look forward to games in the near future. From baseball to lacrosse, tennis, and beyond, the spring is set to have a lot of fun this year.
Moving on to clubs, the drama club had an incredible musical this year showing legally bond between thousands of people throughout the community this past Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The singing, acting, scenery, and everything else was truly spectacular. This past weekend, the forensics team competed in two tournaments. At Union Catholic High School, a congressional debate, Matt Doherty placed fifth; and declamation, Emily Liao placed sixth; and extemporaneous speaking, Philippa Ritter-Chalonge placed sixth, and Jay Sarat won; and winged dogfish debate, James Bin placed third, and LA Wong placed second, and overall, the team took third. At the original invitational, in dramatic interpretation, James Burnett placed third, and Stacy Wong won; and in step-rating and speaking, Pranav Kumar placed second; and improvisational acting, Oscar DeWadi placed fifth, and Noah One Clash placed second; in prose, Kevin Moore placed sixth; in original oratory, Stacy Wayne placed second, and Noah One Clash won; in novice school, in duckish debate, Edna Jo placed fifth, and Lars Lee Robbypodge placed first. Due to these tournaments, the forensics team now has announced its NCFL national qualifiers, which will compete on Memorial Hitting and in Fort Lauderdale. To qualify, students accumulate points over the course of six tournaments during the school year, and the top six kids in every category in the state are able to go. The following students qualify to that tournament. In dual interpretation, Claire Sullivan and James Burnett; in dramatic performance, Zachary Belvin; in oral interpretation, Shaq Yassine and Alexander Sandoz; in extemporaneous speaking, Jay Sarat and Christopher Byer; in original oratory, Noah One Clash; in congressional debate, Pranav Kumar; and winged dogfish debate, James Bin and LA Wong. This past weekend, the history club attended National History Area Regionals at Key University. The following students have advanced to the state competition, which will be held on day second at William Haggan University. We'll know Ravi Chandra, Zach Felisi, Jasmine Chuay, Pranav Kumar, Nicholas Liao, John Tolkow, Dylan Patel, Bhujan Shetty, Jessica Fleischer, Emily Chen, Gabriella Calvin, Amna Al Omal, Alan Wei, Andrew Arrington, Matthew Chang, Liam Cassidy, Carl Tatterby, Randall Devitt, Noah Lincolnstein, Priscilla Kim, Andrew Bishaw, Vithya Reddy, Zara Hamar, Lindsay Paulin, Arushi Gupta, Carrie Hojeki, Amanda Zhang, Rachel Studio, Alison Potenski, and Michaela Stye. Those students were able to qualify in categories such as a paper, individual documentaries, group documentaries, individual websites, as well as group websites.
To the school, with Mark Period Three now full swing, MTHS is ready to turn on the jets and move forward into the beginning of the end of the school year. From spring sports to senior yearbook deadline, the entire school is beginning to face a test. Especially with AP tests and other important things quickly approaching, these next few weeks will be the pivotal and ensuring our success. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members? Have you had a question or a comment?
Not a question but a comment. Um, it's on? Guess so. Um, I have the privilege of actually twice this past weekend seeing legal bond. I don't know how many of you saw it out there. If you didn't, you really missed it. Um, I've never been one prone to hyperbole when it comes to any arts event, and people say, oh, it's just like Broadway and stuff like that. I will say this in all seriousness. To me, it suggested a production that was worthy of either college or possibly like a high school performing arts. It was atypical, my impression, of any high school production I've ever seen. Not only just the lighting and singing, choreography, the acting, um, the sound system, everything about the students and also the support they've given by the administration. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody who was involved, who were actually spectacular in the production. And if anybody out there didn't see it, I think Jesse already made reservations for next year.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Jenny for participating.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, there's so many, so many wonderful accomplishments going on throughout the school district. So many wonderful accomplishments going on throughout the school district, but I did want to make mention of one, which to me is very outstanding. Uh, that is at the FBLA State Competition, Noah One Clash finishing first place in the state in, in public speaking. I hear that this is quite a special honor, and congratulations to Noah.
Thank you, man. Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Good luck for your art as you begin the spring semester, and you see the light at the end of the tunnel, a high school career coming to a close, and new horizons await you, very exciting horizons. So we're excited for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have two areas to report on tonight. First one has to do with our PAR testing. Um, last week and through yesterday, we completed our PAR testing at the Woodmore Middle School, and today began here at Montpel Township High School. Um, the technology for the testing has worked almost without a glitch. We've had a couple of minor issues to report on, but most of the time it's worked pretty effectively, and we want to commend our IT department, Office of Commons in particular. Mark Weber's back there someplace with us tonight, Mark Patine. They've done an outstanding job over the last year for more preparing for this, and now that it's actually here facilitating that effort. Uh, with regard to the test itself, we have received a widespread amount of opt-outs from our students and families, and so I did want to share that report tonight with more education community, beginning with our elementary schools. Um, at Cedar Hill, we had a total of eight students; at Hilldale, five; Valley View, nine; William Mason, seven; Woodmont, twelve; at Woodmore Middle School, ninety-one; and not Catholic, the ones that are on my cell phone as we speak, um, at the high school, four-hundred-eight-six. That no, in no way, by the way, leads the state. There are many school districts that have had over a thousand. Our total right now is somewhere around six-hundred-twenty throughout the district. Uh, the testing will continue for our second day tomorrow. Our testing at the high school will last through next Monday, and then our elementary schools will begin a week from today on Tuesday, and we make those, of course, follow the initial testing weeks as well. Um, any questions from the board about the PAR tests before I move on? Uh, the other, these are the mark-ons are snow days. Last week was fairly unique, I think, as we had three delayed openings and a closing. You don't see that happen very often, and you're probably all tired of hearing my voice at five thirty in the morning. Maybe not all tired of hearing it, some of us are tired of hearing it. I'm tired of making the announcements, I would say, at this. Four thirty AM comes very early for me. Um, so we've used a total of five snow days thus far. Uh, we had in our calendar seven, uh, which turns out to be the right amount thus far. We hope it won't exceed that. Um, but let me just explain what that means to us. Uh, state requirement for spending days in school is one hundred eighty. Uh, we've built one hundred eighty-seven days into our calendar. We've used five for snow days, so thus we have two additional snow days remaining, and based on our contract with the Montpel Township Education Association, our teachers can in fact teach up to one hundred eighty-two. So if we don't use any more snow days, we will have two additional instructional days, and that's only beneficial for our students. Um, if we do need to use one or two additional snow days, we do have those to use without interfering with our April break, so that is good news. And we hope, of course, that we'll see temperatures above freezing for the remainder of the year. We'll keep our fingers crossed. But where we stand right now on March tenth, with two snow days still remaining, we are in good, good shape, I think. Any thoughts or questions?
I, I, I just want to say that I believe that you stepped on a limb in suggesting seven snow days for this year, uh, and it was back on January fifteenth. I'm sure a lot of people who know snow on the ground were thinking it's all maybe the state, but as usual, it was great wisdom and, and very good guidance from the district, so thanks.
And a little bit of thought there. Thank you, man. Any other questions about snow days, the board? Okay, thank you. Um, I'll just jump right into our presentations for this evening. Our first and only presentation is our presentation of the proposed budget for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. The board then would like to take a seat in the audience, and Jim Tevez, our business administrator, and I will get our presentation.
Um, we begin with our mission statement. Um, the Montpel Township community values education at the highest level, and our mission's to guarantee exceptional education for our students while maximizing individual potential and fostering a lifelong commitment to learning through a strong partnership of educators, families, and community. So as we consider our vision for the future, opportunity and high expectations for all, teacher effectiveness and student engagement at the center of our work, passion learners in inclusive and collaborative settings, and maintain the excellence while becoming a district of distinction. These are our academic or our learning goals for this present year, and they include the Original Science Research Program, which is now in its third year of implementation, so we now have sophomores, juniors, and seniors enrolled in that program, with a new crop of freshmen who are interested in becoming sophomores next year in the program. Our district math-matics program, uh, this year we implemented a new series in our secondary schools. Uh, the high school media center, um, ground will be broken at the end of June for a brand-new renovation in our Montpel Township, uh, high school media center. We had students who participated with us on that committee, um, as well as teachers, administrators, parents. Uh, it's been a project that's several of them making, and I think you're going to be thrilled with the results, which will really create a state-of-the-art media center for our students as they move into our school district. I want to thank all those who participated on that committee. We've been working with the architects now, and plans are already created and they're going before the state education department for approval, and it's moving forward. The world language program, uh, we have a task force that's presently operating right now to study world language in our school from eighth to twelve. Again, we have students, parents, teachers, administrators on that task force, and sometime this spring, we will get a report on what their findings are. Effective teaching and professional development, uh, again, our teachers are going after professional development and, um, in many different areas. There, special education, we've been paying a lot of attention to for various reasons, um, and tonight, through some of the recommendations in the budget, you'll see some of that information. And the effective school culture on students, um, this year Rachel's Challenge came to our school district, typically to the high school, um, and next year we're partnering with United Way and the project called Youth Empower Youth Alliance, which will be a K-12 initiative to look at the culture and climate of our schools and move toward a more positive initiative in that area. So as we look at, um, our budget, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, we maintain class size, um, and in the athletic area, clubs, uh, maintaining our present programs in the athletics and clubs areas. Uh, we're maintaining our programs, our teaming, and of core elective programs in the elementary, middle, and high school, and we do have some new initiatives going on, uh, throughout the district, some enhancements to the program, some new equipment. Um, but something that I've been stressing in our, in my previous proposals, in that this is a very tight budget year compared to our previous years. Um, that will occur just by the mathematics of it all, as we are able to bring a two percent tax cap to bear, uh, on the budget, um, and so there will be times when budgets will be tighter, when budgets will be able to be more lean in terms of initiatives. We're very fortunate, the district, to stay within our two percent tax cap and yet bring new initiatives forward. This year's a little bit different, but I still think it's a very positive budget that we are proposing today. So the area of elementary school proposals, instructional materials to enhance literacy, mathematics, including the new writing program at the elementary school. This is something our teachers have been interested in and our administrators at the elementary level, so that will be coming forward. Program renewals in all core content areas, and some summer support for our schools in terms of nursing services. At the elementary school, we are making a different proposal than I was making two weeks ago with regard to reductions in elementary staffing, and these reductions are as a result of declining enrollment in particular grade levels in particular schools. Um, we do have a class size policy, which does give the superintendent some discretion. On the other hand, uh, we do want to be, um, conscious of our budget and make changes when the changes are warranted. So at this point, we have changes in three of our elementary schools, a decrease of one teaching position at Valley View, one at William Mason, and one at Woodmont, again, based on staffing. Um, and enrollment, the class size limits at those three schools are not exceeded. Um, initially, for those of you who have been following the process, we had two additional decreases at our elementary schools. Uh, one was at Cedar Hill, and we had a second decrease at William Mason. The one at William Mason was clear, was unfortunately a clerical error on my part. Uh, that change was not warranted, and it should have ultimately been one at William Mason all along. The one at Cedar Hill has to do with the particular needs of students, uh, in the grade two at Cedar Hill, um, and reviewing, um, that demographic with our director of special education, our supervisor of special education, uh, Andrew Woodring, our assistant for critical instruction. I came to the conclusion to take that off the list of positions that we're going to look for a decrease in. Um, also at the elementary school, Chromebooks and cards to support instruction at each elementary school, and some smart boards and speakers in specific schools as well. Um, and those are middle school, a stipend for the versar, that's the individual bear who works through our student activity fund. Our high school already has an individual who receives a stipend in that position, and it also Chromebooks and cards to support instruction. At the high school, the addition of a point four ESL teacher, this is based on needs of our students, and because this will in fact create a full-time position for a part-time teacher of ESL, uh, we do acquire benefits to be added to that line item as well. Stipends for our science research, teachers who spend numerous, numerous evenings working with the students and families in their program, um, and so small stipends built in for those individuals. Um, as we open our new media center here in the high school, and that opening probably will be in October, by the way, uh, the media center will take more than just the summer months to renovate and complete. So when that opens, we anticipate our students will want to use the media center before school perhaps and after school, so we are building in, um, money in order to pay an individual who will be able to keep the media center open longer than just school hours, so our students can take advantage of that, that great space that's going to be created. And also, again, due to what we think is going to be the use of the media center, um, a paraprofessional who will go alongside our media center specialist, our media library specialist, so we'll have a second adult, um, in that facility as well during the day. Uh, that last one is a new proposal from the one that the board of community heard a couple of weeks ago. At the high school, we have a new AP course that we're going to be offering, AP Human Geography, and the Humanities Research Program, which is now in its second year here at the high school, will be expanded through the addition of Chromebooks and teachers, uh, not additional staffing, but teachers who will be teaching that to, um, expand to more sections, um, here in the high school in both English and social studies. There is special services, uh, we do require the increase of four point five teachers, four of the teachers here at the high school, and a point five teacher at Cedar Hill. Um, stipends at the versar middle school, also in the area of special education. Uh, add, so our special education teachers presently teach, uh, six periods of special education at the middle school. Um, at the high school, our special education teachers only teach five, and so we require additional stipends for those middle school teachers, and stipends here at the high school for science and, and special education math lab. One of our special education programs, uh, is at William Mason Elementary School, um, and this program serves, um, students with particular needs. Um, this year, we have a small number of children in that classroom, and we also have some preschool children who next year would graduate into our school and into that classroom. That, uh, program right now, uh, is a program that we contract with, um, Bourbon Special Services at a particular cost, and I noted the cost here. For next year, we anticipate the cost would be little over eight hundred forty-four thousand dollars for that program. We're going to in fact run the program ourselves. In other words, we'll be hiring our own staff, our own teachers who have expertise in this area, um, and run an identical quality program, uh, and the cost for us will be six hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars and some, some change, which will result in a savings of more than a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So we're continuing to look to bring initiatives like that, uh, into our district so that we can save money and still provide the quality education for the children that we certainly want to do. So other additional initiatives, the high school media center that I mentioned before, um, the money for that comes from, um, our capital reserve account. The Board of Education has graciously, uh, supported this program, and over the last two years has budgeted, uh, a million dollars toward that program, and this year we'll be asking them to budget an additional seven hundred thousand dollars, or seven hundred twenty thousand, I think it is exactly, uh, out of capital reserve. That in fact does not affect the budget, that is money that is already in a reserve account, so that doesn't have effect on the budget itself. Um, and then there's some additional pieces to the media center that has to do with technology and other kinds of equipment or furniture, um, which will in fact be part of the budget process itself. Um, the next area you see, the school resource officer, this is a, um, initiative which was not again on the presentation a couple of weeks ago. Um, the township is very interested in partnering with us for a school resource officer, uh, to be part of our school district, um, for the township to pick up, uh, half of the salary of the school resource officer and their benefits, so the cost is actually a heck of a little less than half of the total amount. Uh, this is a model that is in many, many districts. Um, it's a model that's used to, uh, help create relationships between students and the police officers, uh, in our community, um, and in this day and age of safety and security being important, uh, we, we could be a very, very good addition for our community. Um, so we are looking at that initiative. Uh, it would take, of course, conversation between the school district and township in terms of contract, and making sure that our school district has a lot of input into who the officer is, and the hours, uh, and, um, the conditions around the work, uh, but it is an initiative that we're, we're looking at seriously. Uh, and the last initiative again, and this is new, it wasn't here two weeks ago, is the reduction of one secondary teacher. We're not sure exactly what that position would be, but we're confident that based on enrollment, um, and based on, um, student, um, participation in various courses, that we would be able to make that reduction without hurting class size, um, within our schools. I'll bring more information, of course, to the board and community as we pinpoint exactly what that area would be in. There is technology. We continue to bring more technology to the district for important reasons, um, and for next year, uh, we anticipate eight hundred seventy Chromebooks, uh, coming into the district. Um, the Chromebooks are being used more and more at all levels, uh, from elementary right through the high school, um, and to charge those Chromebooks, we have twenty-seven cards. Uh, those are charging cards that the Chromebooks stay in when they're not being used, and you can see what the distribution looks like. Ninety Chromebooks for each of our five elementary schools, uh, sixty for the versar, a hundred twenty for the high school, um, and then two hundred forty additionally for the district or around the district to replace aging Chromebooks, um, so they would be additional, they would in fact replace aging equipment that already exists here, the two hundred forty. Uh, smart So at this point, we have changes in three of our elementary schools, a decrease of one teaching position at Valley View, one at William Mason, and one at Woodmont. Again, based on staffing and enrollment, the class size limits at those three schools are not exceeded. Initially, for those of you who have been following the process, we had two additional decreases at our elementary schools. One was at Cedar Hill, and we had a second decrease at William Mason. The one at William Mason was clearly, was unfortunately a clerical error on my part. That change was not warranted. It should have been the only big one at William Mason all along. The one at Cedar Hill has to do with the particular needs of students in the grade two. At Cedar Hill, and reviewing that demographic with our Director of Special Education, our Supervisor of Special Education, Andrew Woodruff, our Assistant for Clerical Instruction, I came to the conclusion to take that off the list of positions that we're going to look for decreasing. Also at the elementary school, Chromebooks and cards to support instruction at each elementary school, and some smart boards and speakers in specific schools as well. Those are middle school, a stipend for the BURSAR, that's the individual bear who works through our Student Activity Fund. Our high school already has an individual who receives a stipend in that position. And it also Chromebooks and cards to support instruction. At the high school, the addition of a .4 ESL teacher. This is based on needs of our students, and because this will in fact create a full-time position for a part-time teacher of ESL, we do acquire benefits to be added to that line item as well. Stipends for our science research, teachers who spend numerous, numerous evenings working with the students and families in their program, and so small stipends built in for those individuals. As we open our new media center here in the high school, and that opening probably will be in October by the way, the media center will take more than just the summer months to renovate and complete. So when that opens, we anticipate our students will want to use the media center before school perhaps, and after school. So we are building in money in order to pay an individual who will be able to keep the media center open longer than just school hours, so our students can take advantage of that, that great space that's going to be created. And also, again, due to what we think is going to be the use of the media center, a paraprofessional who will go alongside our media center specialist, our media library specialist, so we'll have a second adult in that facility as well during the day. That last one is a new proposal from the one that the Board of Community heard a couple of weeks ago. At the high school, we have a new AP course that we're going to be offering, AP Human Geography. And the Humanities Research Program, which is now in its second year here at the high school, will be expanded through the addition of Chromebooks and teachers, not additional staffing, but teachers who will be teaching that to expand to more sections here in the high school in both English and Social Studies. There are special services. We do require the increase of 4.5 teachers, four of the teachers here at the high school, and a .5 teacher at Cedar Hill. Stipends at Lazard Middle School, also in the area of special education. Add, our special education teachers presently teach six periods of special education at the middle school. At the high school, our special education teachers only teach five, and so we require additional stipends for those middle school teachers. And stipends here at the high school for science and, and special education math lab. One of our special education programs is at William Mason Elementary School, and this program serves students with particular needs. This year, we have a small number of children in that classroom, and we also have some preschool children who next year would graduate into our school and into that classroom. That program right now is a program that we contract with Bourbon Special Services at a particular cost, and I know the cost here, for next year, we anticipate the cost would be little over $844,000 for that program. We're going to in fact run the program ourselves. In other words, we'll be hiring our own staff, our own teachers who have expertise in this area, and run an identical quality program. And the cost for us will be $667,000 and some, some change, which will result in a savings of more than $175,000. So we're continuing to look to bring initiatives like that into our district so that we can save money and still provide the quality education for the children that certainly want to do. So other additional initiatives, the high school media center that I mentioned before. The money for that comes from our capital reserve account. Board of Education has graciously supported this program, and over the last two years has budgeted a million dollars toward that program, and this year we'll be asking them to budget an additional $700,000 or $720,000, I think it is exactly, out of capital reserve. That in fact does not affect the budget, that is money that is already in a reserve account, so that doesn't have effect on the budget itself. And then there's some additional pieces to the media center that has to do with technology and other kinds of equipment or furniture, which will in fact be part of the budget process itself. The next area you see, the School Resource Officer, this is a initiative which was not again on the presentation a couple of weeks ago. The township is very interested in partnering with us for a School Resource Officer to be part of our school district, for the township to pick up half of the salary of the School Resource Officer and their benefits, so of course it's actually a heck of a little less than half of the total amount. This is a model that is in many, many districts. It's a model that's used to help create relationships between students and the police officers in our community, and in this day and age of safety and security being important, we think it could be a very, very good addition for our community. So we are looking at that initiative. It would take, of course, conversation between the school district and township in terms of contract, and making sure that our school district has a lot of input into who the officer is, and the hours, and the conditions around the work, but it is an initiative that we're, we're looking at seriously. And the last initiative again, and this is new, it wasn't here two weeks ago, is the reduction of one secondary teacher. We're not sure exactly what that position would be, but we're confident that based on enrollment and based on student participation in various courses, that we would be able to make that reduction without hurting class size within our schools. I'll bring more information, of course, to the Board and community as we pinpoint exactly what that area would be in. Area of Technology, we continue to bring more technology to the district for important reasons, and for next year, we anticipate 870 Chromebooks coming into the district. The Chromebooks are being used more and more at all levels, from elementary right through the high school, and to charge those Chromebooks, we have 27 cards. Those are charging cards that the Chromebooks stay in when they're not being used, and you can see what the distribution looks like. Ninety Chromebooks for each of our five elementary schools, 60 for Lazard, 120 for the high school, and then 240 additionally for the district or around the district to replace aging Chromebooks. So they would be additional, they would in fact replace aging equipment that already exists here, the 240. Smartboard for Hilldale's Art Room, the smartboard speakers, one at Valley View and six at Hilldale, and six laser printers here at the high school. Terms of Athletic Proposals, it's been proposed to me by Mr. Pupatello, our Supervisor of Athletics, that we bring a strength coach into the district to work with our athletic teams. This would take the place of the present weight room coach, and we do find that we can have one less assistant wrestling coach because of the numbers of participants, so the decrease of the two positions would be about equal to the increase of the strength coach. Bleachers for our new turf field. Football helmets, right now we have some football helmets that are not what is called five-star rated, which is the highest rating. We want all of our football helmets to be of the highest quality, and so we're replacing any football helmets that are not five-star rated with five-star helmets. And then one set of sock goals for our new turf fields. Professional Development is various areas that we focus on, and these are just some of them that are listed, including Danielson Training, money for our school improvement panels or teams, Wilson Training, Training for Science Research, AP Course Training, anytime we have a teacher who has never taught an AP course before, they must be trained in that course, and then to support teachers in the evaluation model. Curriculum Development is ongoing and continuous, and so we have money in the budget to support curriculum development, and these are our teachers who are paid to write curriculum outside of the school day, whether it's after school, weekends, or summers. Okay, this completes the instructional part of the budget, and Jim Tevis, our Business Administrator, is going to continue with the capital side of the budget and the financing behind it.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. What we're going to do is we're going to go through these proposed budgets now, and try to be brief. It's really just basically at this point a summary overview. There's going to be another board meeting next Tuesday night where the Board will again review the budget, or another budget presentation, have to provide us some more comparison numbers at that point, and hopefully the Board will discuss and vote to adopt a preliminary budget. It will still only be preliminary at that point, and then it goes to the County Superintendent for review, and then eventually vote for public hearing of the budget. That being said, for the last few years, I've been fortunate to be able to come up to stand before the public and the Board and say that this is great, this isn't just a maintenance budget. For so many years, back from 2010 and going on, we had drastic cuts, draconian cuts to all school budgets in New Jersey, and it was really nice the last few years, so we were able to start acting back on a number of initiatives and stuff, and we did this and stuff. This year, however, we're starting to see a trend going the other way now, so we need to tighten our belts a little bit, and I can see it's been commissional dollar-wise certainly, as you've seen in the past, and we have to be a little bit more cautious and try to preserve our fund balance, you know, so we have enough to operate, you know, to the standards that we have. That being said, what we do is we go through the Principal's Administrators, and they give the budget wish lists every year, it's a pretty standard routine, and we can go and decide, I'm free myself, the administrators, what's the best proposals to support this proposed budget. You have a priority listing sheet, it's very detailed, maybe like, you know, 15 pages long, but it's pretty effective. I just carry it through every year, and I usually have a priority project, and we've got there, and of course the big thing is how much money do we have to reinforce page one, and that's what we're going to do at the end of the day. So these are the proposals set forth this year. We propose, there are a bunch of presentations that we posted to the website, some one tomorrow, so sometimes you see the numbers a little hard to read, they're on your handout there, or up on the screen, we will put, post it to the district website. We have a couple of bigger projects this year. We're doing boiler replacements at two of our schools, one is at Valley View Elementary School this year, the other's going to be at Lazard Middle School. So those are, they've been slated to be done for some time now, and it's at a point where we can take, they've got it done, so we're actually doing some of that capital reserve funding that Dr. Freed alluded to a while back. And capital reserve is something that districts are able to utilize in New Jersey to help us save for a rainy day. We need to do, not only the boiler at one school this year, but we really need to do in two years, so we're going to cap that, we're going to be fine. At William Mason School, we're going to be doing some intercom system. We have a number of state security initiatives that we've been doing in the district now for the last, it's been the third year of the budget before. So we're doing things like intercom systems, we still agree with Cedar Hill, we're putting up, we're going to get them on access to the school, and we continue to that initiative, continue to budget them, they're very important pieces. At Woodmont, basically, this is a big year for them, you know, some years you get, some years you don't. But again, two different issues to be dealt with at those schools. Of course, the high school, we have a big center renovation, that's, that's our big project for this year. As Dr. Freed said, we're going to pull about $1,720,000 in capital reserve, that we gave fund, if you will, the Board was, for the last several years, have put away, a little this year, $400,000, $600,000 the first year, $40,000 last year, and now we're finishing up this. Some of these initiatives we actually received on the superintendent's side, but the rest of facilities are just kind of a mob in here as well, and we support to point out that, the thing I really want to mention most about these is very important, is typically the budget is somewhere around a million dollars for maintenance and facility capital approvals for budget, and I hope he's heated for very high margins, this is my sixth year now as his administrator. And there's a, there's a good reason for that, taking roughly a million dollars every single year, you're not having to, it's, it's a balance, it's very consistent, it helps us to, you know, methodically take care of our buildings, do the routine maintenance, the things that aren't necessarily flashy or exciting, that need to be done, you know, like a roof, a floor, and things like this. This, this year though, as I mentioned, Dr. Freed, well, we aren't technically on belt initiative, we're actually, seven million, we're only going to be using just $700,000 of operating budget, or capital facilities budget. So again, it's not, you know, in the world or anything like that, it's just signaling that we have to be a little bit more cautious now, it's, you know, we need to tighten our belt, and just keep an eye on our hands, make sure that, you know, we don't have too many initiatives that we get to the point where we're back to 2010 and we're going to, um, last. District-wide, we have a number of facility capital projects, maybe we're going to be doing this year, we're seeing less of these, in the past years, that gave probably a pattern, just double the numbers. So again, it's just a sign that we're, you know, we're a little more cautious. This is a technology initiative, and again, I would have to let the superintendent speak to it. At this point, I don't know if we made this departmentally, or maybe I have some of this vanity program. Because I, yeah, so okay, this is continuing, you know, Dr. Freed, on his side of the education instruction side. Safety and security initiatives that we're doing against the third year, and Dr. Freed mentioned that one of the initiatives here at Lazard, some of that wants to be paid for that. Now, the actual budget itself, 15, 16 proposed budget is roughly represents a 5%, expenditure increase over the current 14, 15, 16. That's not really how a school district in New Jersey right now can grow their budget, so to speak. The way you grow your budget is by the whole tax law. We're capped at 2% increase every school district in New Jersey, so the expenditure budget, you know, does really play into how much we can increase it, that's what the tax law. We are staying at that 2% cap. There are many ways that districts can go above that 2% local tax cap. There's substantive cap, there's number of measures there available to a district, we range from benefit costs to actual school, to the list goes on. Montefiore Township Board of Ed is very firm, and they've always stayed within those guidelines. Because the, you know, the, the flip side of that is, yes, if we go above that 2% local tax law increase, well then what's happening? Paying more taxes. We'll find that's, you know, that's, that's the, the other side of it. So the very, Montefiore's always very conservative about that. One of the things, if you're seeing that 5%, you know, 5% does seem a little bit higher on the expenditure side, the reason you're seeing that is because of that media center project. It's significant, it's, you know, $1.27 million, and even though we're taking it at capital reserve, it's not, you know, we're not going after a little tax law money, and it's still a bill of bill, it's made sure, they have to improve somewhere around 103% of this expenditure side of the budget. Share services is something we continue to look at every single year, we actually have some committees, we leave with some other over-Board of Education, Quan, Park, we try to share some ideas, then we have bigger ones that we do on a statewide level, such as cooperative supply groups, radio supplies, things of this nature. And, you know, as we move into these economic times, the last several years now, it's become really, really important, and Montefiore has saved, it's something that's been done. And one of our, one of the resolutions that I'm going to bring to the Board at our next board meeting is to recommend a new garbage cycle that we've done, we've been catching. We do very well with that, we're very happy, town hall bus, they're very happy with it, so we're going to, my recommendation would be to do that. But again, these, these subjects are very important, for transportation, you know, these costs just keep going up, we're in for a group, assurances, it just, it helps to be down below that financial level, economies of scale. State aid comparison, this year was basically a platform, and we were certainly no exception to that general rule, so we're thankful to be able to help. We did grab an extra $21,000 for something called SEMI, which is a federal program, which you don't really have to say, and you kind of have to do it if you hit the same threshold, and Montefiore was just at that threshold, so we received an extra $21,000, so I added that to the budget as well. And to pay for the budget, we have a number of ways that you can do this, obviously through the tax law. If Montefiore, that constitutes a line share of that overall $72 million, $7 million operating budget. The other pieces would be federal ramping, state ramping, state aid. One piece that you see is something called extraordinary aid, which you typically don't see districts budgeting large amounts of money for. We've been getting it, it's been steady for a number of years now, based upon special education. It's an application that needs to be done, and what we're doing is we're just taking a little bit of the emergency this year to help us fund, and we're going to be anticipating that extraordinary aid. So that's one of the things that I pointed out before during budget discussions in the And future budget discussions, as I mentioned, next Tuesday night, there'll be a discussion, there'll be a budget presentation, and then Dr. Freed will tell everybody.
So, thank you. What we're going to do now is ask the Board of Education to return to the table, and we're going to give them a chance to ask questions, make comments, and then the audience, the community will have a chance to ask questions and make comments as well.
So while everyone is taking their seats, I just want to thank Jim and his office for all the hard work that they put into the budget, especially in light of some challenges that the business office faced these past few weeks. Jim Denell, and he's been coming in early and staying late, and when I say late, I mean 4:30, 5:30 in the mornings to get his work done. So Jim, thank you, and thank the business office, wherever you are, Jim, as well as Dr. Freed, who works collaboratively with the business administrator. It's not that way in every district, we're very lucky here that our superintendent and business administrator work so well together, each is an expert in their field, they come together to fill up a budget that is even in tightening our belts this year, we all knew this would happen, the 2% cap is creating some issues in many districts. In our district, this year is, it's starting, now I mean that when I say it's started. Nevertheless, they were able to pool their intellectual resources and financial resources and come up with a budget that not only gives us curricular initiatives, but very nice capital initiatives. So for that, I want to thank you, Paul, and you, Jim, and your staff for the hard work that you put into developing this budget. On that note, questions from the Board, questions, comments? Okay, on the seat, none. I will open it up to the public for comments on the budget. Is someone coming to the mic? Mic's over there.
Hi, I'm Michelle Zuckerman, I'm co-president of Cedar Hill ETA, Home and School Association, and we're here representing Presidents Council and the elementary schools in Lazard. First, we want to thank Dr. Freed and Jim and everybody for the careful consideration that goes into the budget, we want you to know that we really always do appreciate it. We wanted to follow up on an email that we sent earlier today, to see if there was any potential for you considering how these funds are phase three of the air conditioning project that, I mean, has been started the past two years. So we just wanted to see if that was a possibility. Thank you.
I'll, I'm just looking at the time the email was sent, so I really doubt that anyone had a chance to see it, but, you know, the, I'll just make a comment, the budget is tight this year, as you've heard. I don't know if the Board has any interest, or if the Board is interested in having the administration possibly look for some minds to, you know, finish off this project, or contribute something to the project at this point. If the Board would like the administration to have, see what they can come up with, do that, if not, we will hold on.
I have a question. I haven't seen the email or the information, so I apologize, but do we have an understanding of what these sides have requested, is it powered by school?
Okay. The way we requested it was that the past two years, it was 125,006 schools, so the spreadsheet that we sent, I realize that we sent, you know, this afternoon, but basically it summarized the amount of remaining costs to finish the schools, which is about $274,000. So what we were hoping was that potentially that 125, again, which was given the two more years, the past two years, would bring us very, very close to finishing the air conditioning at most of the schools. And we really do understand that, you know, the tides have turned from the past two years, we understand why it was able to be in the budget the past two years, but I guess really we're thinking we've come so far, if there's any way of, you know, and we've given so much and done so much fundraising, and it's hard to believe now, but it really does make a huge difference in the schools for a good four months, five months of the school years, that really without it, it impacts the education of the children negatively, because it's very difficult to learn in the crazy heat of those classrooms. So we do, we, you know, as a PTA, as the Presidents Council, for the past few years, we've all really jointly believed in this, and just are trying to see if we can really, you know, get closer to finishing it.
I have two questions. Do you want to?
And no, another summary, in the past two years, the Board has contributed just around that 250, the 125 a year, the PTAs have contributed 257,000. So it's been, we've basically matched you, and again, the remaining piece is around 274,000.
So I guess my question is, do the PTCs think that they are still able to match the companies?
Most of us can't anymore give what we've given the past few years, however, in the next coming years, we all anticipate having some more tricky trades where it would be a small enough amount that in the next few years, we could probably just finish if we can get one more year from the Board.
So even if it was something less than 125, you among yourselves would figure out how you wanted that allocated?
I mean, I think that we all have agreed-
Because in the past, it was equal amount, yeah.
And we agree that from the Board, what we've agreed is from the Board, we still want equal, and we agree that that should be equal, and then the PTAs can contribute whatever they individually can fundraise, and that doesn't necessarily have to be equal.
I'm sorry, you're trying to lie to me?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
One more question, and then David, that mean all your, well, phase three, if phase three is completed on these numbers, does that mean every classroom? Will that take care of every classroom? My only concern is if we could even do it. My concern would be if we don't do all the classrooms, does that present logistical issues for selection, who gets in those classrooms?
That's how we have, we've done that now. The principals have gone through their buildings, and they find our classes with their staff, and that's how, to date, it's been silent.
Like, at Cedar Hill, I actually walked during the summer months with Dr. Raj, and we did temperature measurements in each classroom at different times, so each school has a priority list, and the hottest classrooms are getting done first.
Thank you. On Dave, you're good?
No, actually, you asked my question about, might even be emailing distributed.
So, if you are any more questions or comments, would you like for the administration to take a look at this? Yes? Yes?
Thank you.
I think it's worth looking at, but based upon what Dr. Freed and Mr. Teves indicated in their budget presentation, this is a pretty bright, pretty tight year, and I see you all waving your heads, you agree with that, and I don't want, believe you, at least for me, that we're going to vote for this, okay? Because if they want to go through the budget, and I know some of the principals, you know, they want every room air conditioned everywhere, which is maybe true, but if I remember, Karen, when we started this a couple of years ago, various PTAs, home and schools, contributed money, it wasn't the same for each school, if I remember. Now, I wasn't home all afternoon, so I don't know if you sent an email, or if any of that occurred, I'd be very curious to see that, okay? So if you send it to me, well, then I'll get it when I get home and open it up. But the point is, if the administration wants to look at this to see where we can come up with 125, or as Karen said, maybe half of that, or less than that, that's something. But I think $125,000, based upon what we've been presented with tonight, it's going to be tight, that's just my opinion, but maybe the state will come through and say, hey, look, here's another $100,000, I doubt it. But I don't have a problem looking up, that's the idea of a preliminary budget, okay, we adopt that next week, and then we have the final budget being adopted when, Jim? In April sometime?
Yes.
Middle of April, so there's still time, but right now, we'd have to take from Peter to pay the full, so to speak, and I don't know if anything might happen between now and then, teachers retire, or some of the projects we have come in last month, I don't know. It'd be something to look at, I'd be curious to look at that email, but then actually, not that I don't trust you, but I'll have our administration look at it. I know you-
You're good.
Someone who thinks would work with fun.
I think what you're hearing is saying is, if Jim and Paul look at the budget, and there's money for this project, I mean, I think all of us feel 125 is a really big stretch, but they'll look. Do both. And just please say your name and where you live.
Yes, I'm Marco Meltzer, I live on Diane Drive, I'm a William Mason family. I'm a parent of Aaron, a second grader, and triplet kindergarten children, and I'm here for two reasons. The first is that I understand that the Board could potentially eliminate a teaching position for William Mason, and I feel confident that this will impede the learning of our eldest child, if he goes from a second grade class where there are three, into a third grade class where it's combined down to two. He has already had an ineffective ability to concentrate, and ultimately, I think he'd be lost in the confusion, as with many other second graders. We think that the smaller class size provides a better learning environment, helps facilitate child learning, and ultimately makes it easier to maintain a parent-teacher relationship. Another potentially tragic outcome of eliminating a second grade or another class would be the possibility of losing an invaluable but non-tenure teacher, and possibly the only parent in the district in the unique position of having three children currently in kindergarten. And I'm deeply concerned that our school, William Mason, could lose our non-tenure teacher, Jenna Mordaga, as a result of the proposed budget. Aaron had Miss Mordaga last year, and it's truly heartbreaking for her that her younger children might not have that opportunity. She's a true educator, she holds each child to a high standard while appreciating and celebrating their uniqueness, and she has a rapport with children and families that's unparalleled. When I asked my second grader, what he might say in her behalf, he said, she's an awesome teacher because she taught me everything I needed to know for second grade. So with this in mind, I respectfully request that you please try to act to allow her to stay at William Mason. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Leah Kaufman, Taylortown Road, also a William Mason parent. My mother is a recently retired superintendent from New York, and I am a, have been for many years, a school bond attorney, so I definitely understand about tax levies, and I understand about the budget, but I'm also here to talk as a William Mason parent on behalf of Miss Mordaga. I have a son who is currently in Miss Mordaga's first grade class, and I also have a son who is in the third grade, and also potentially one of those grades who next year would be relegated to a much higher class size if the fourth grade goes down to be at two teachers in that grade. But I'm really here to talk on behalf, similarly as the last lady, on behalf of Miss Mordaga. You opened up your presentation, Dr. Freed, with talking about the vision of the future, being about teacher effectiveness and student engagement, and if there ever was an epitome of teacher effectiveness and student engagement, it is Miss Mordaga. She really does take the time to learn about each child's individual needs, to tailor the teaching to suit each child. Last year, when my son was in kindergarten, he was obviously a typical six-year-old boy, but he had trouble sitting in circle time, he had trouble keeping his hands to himself, calling out when it wasn't appropriate, and I thought, okay, this is going to be a long 12 years. And then this year, everything changed, and I have to say, a lot of that is completely attributable to Miss Mordaga. He sits and pays attention, he doesn't call out, he's a little teacher's pet, and the change is palpable. She actually gave him a book to read tonight, that was specific homework for him to read. It wasn't a general assignment for the whole class, it wasn't a book that everyone else had to read, it was, this is for you, based on your level, where you should be for you to practice, this is your homework. And it's not even just something that we've experienced at home, and based on our meetings with Mordaga, my husband actually asked a friend of my son's in his class, so another seven-year-old girl, who had been with him in class last year and in class this year, and asked her how our son was doing, and as she observed, doing great this year, was her response. So the fact that even, you know, fellow colleagues of seven-year-olds are noticing the difference that Miss Mordaga can bring is really a testament to her teaching ability, and it would be a shame if simply because of, you know, length of time, employee, non-tenure, if those were the type of decisions. I know as a Board of Ed, your prime job and motivation is to make sure that you have the most effective teachers. Your district is known by its teachers, the reputation of this town as a whole is known by its schools, and if you don't have the teachers that stay, the teachers who are the most effective, that's going to impact the reputation of the district as a whole. And, you know, I think you also just want to be wary of the situation, the third graders are so close to being at their maximum capacity, it is possible that you reduce class size, you reduce the teacher, and then, you know, within a couple of months into the school year, you know, you really just take two or three more kids coming into that grade, you're at your maximum size, you've got to hire someone, you scramble around, fire, you know, hire someone who happens to be available instead of really the people who you want in this district. Also, I would be curious to know, with Miss Mordaga in particular, because she is sort of on the bottom of the total pole in terms of time that she's been here, her salary and what that turns into on a, you know, per taxpayer basis, based on, you know, the increase in the budget. I can imagine for the average taxpayer that her salary is more than a couple dollars per average taxpayer. So, just my thoughts, thank you. Thank you.
Let me just make a couple of comments about our last two speakers if I can. So in terms of class size, Boards of Education throughout the state of New Jersey and typically throughout the nation create class-sized guidelines, and they usually speak to a maximum, and when you get to that number, it gives the superintendent guidance to create another section of classes. The purpose of that is to try to give the Board an opportunity to plan, because with that class-sized guideline, just leaving it up to, let's say, any particular superintendent's perspective, could mean that some years, 27 in the class would be perfectly fine, and the next superintendent might feel, no, 22 in the class is the way it should be. So we have been, I'll call it lenient, if you will, with regard to class-sized guidelines, when we find that we have particular circumstances that allow me to make a case for why, instead of moving to fewer sections, now we continue to have an additional section. In the case that you're talking about, William Mason, which is the first grade going to the second, in the first grade right now, there are only two sections, and those two sections continue to third grade, it just so happens that a third grade this year has three sections that exists. So, in fact, we're not taking three sections, we're reducing to two, we're just moving to four, and again, the Board class size policy allows for that based on the number within that policy for bringing two. To the point you're making about the particular teacher, I can publicly speak about any staff member, it's not allowed, it's unethical for a variety of reasons. But what I can talk to you about, and if I misquote something, our attorney will help me out, is talk to you about what the law permits. So when we have to, or in the position of decreasing in a particular area of certification in our district, whether it's at the high school level or the elementary level, it is looked at within a certification area, and so we do need to begin with our non-tenure Within the non-tenure staff, we have choices. Within the top-tenure staff, it's not based on seniority. Within anyone who's non-tenured, we have the opportunity to retain the most effective teachers, and to part ways with, if you will, teachers that we believe may start on value on our lessons. In the case of our elementary schools, this runs across all five schools, so if in fact we're decreasing one teacher at, doesn't matter which school, let's say Downview, while that school would have one less human being there, that person in fact may become a teacher at William Mason, because we think that teacher's a highly effective, non-tenure teacher, and it may be from someone at William Mason that we say, we won't be able to have you back next year, because that certification area runs across all five buildings, they all have the same certifications. So while William Mason, in this case, would have one less person, we can't right now actually name who that person would be. We also have, Ryan, I believe, developed my contract, I guess someone will let me know, we also, actually, Peter Portisback there, you can let me know, I have it here from it, he's the president of our Teachers Association. We also have the right to transfer teachers, so if we actually thought that a non-tenure teacher was going to be, that for whatever reason, that they could be effective at the school where they're at, we could potentially move a tenure teacher, they would retain their job, but in a different school. Am I correct about that, Peter? Yeah, I think so. So there's lots of flexibility, but if we don't, if we don't look at class size, then no matter what our enrollment becomes, and it is declining, actually, one of our Board members asked for that information earlier, and I can dig it out, share a number with you. So this year, our total population came to 12, is 3,826. We anticipate next year to be 3,735. It's about 90 students, now, district-wide, about 90 students left. If we go to the latest, to the 2011, 2012 school year, we have 4,079 students in our district now this year, so one, two, three, four years later, 3,735. That's a loss of over 300 students. If we continue to just maintain the same number of sections that we had back in 2011 and '12, that would be wonderful, but most private schools couldn't support that, because our class size is, we have many more teachers than we would need, so to speak, based on our class size policy. I hope that helps understand a little bit more, but we can't assume any one particular teacher is in jeopardy. Again, they may not be at the school we'd like them to be, but they may not be in jeopardy of not being in the district, those are decisions we may collaborate with our principals, supervisors, assistant superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Freed.
Hi, my name's James Howard, I work for, and I have two kids in William Mason. Thank you, thank you for those remarks, Dr. Freed, I wish I could have debated them individually, because you made a lot of good points, but I got a little bit of a mix there. Is the reduction in staff driven by budget, or is it driven by the effectiveness of the teachers, or is it driven by something else? Because I got a little bit, I felt as though we got mixed messages. I was troubled that the first slide discusses, an early slide discusses the notion that we're going to reduce a headcount, a teaching staff, and at a macro level, I appreciate the ratios, I appreciate the students per teacher, I appreciate all that, I run a business as well, I get budgets, but as a parent, and I know most of you, not all of you are parents, the teachers are the interface to the students, okay? Our buildings are older than I am, okay, and I have gray hair, okay? You know, we're not talking about top-notch facilities, so where it becomes important is that human interface to the students. And I, one of my kids had Miss Mordaga last year, and I appreciate what you said about it's not necessarily about her, but clearly she stands out as a candidate, and, you know, she had a huge effect on my child. My kids are now, they're twins, they're in the second grade set, they're three sections now. The difference in the learning experience for them was amazing when they went from two sections to three. I forget the exact- I forget the exact numbers, but more than three-quarters of those classes are boys. And if you guys have boys, you know the energy level for boys is just off the charts compared to girls. Where this becomes important in my mind is when you humanize the notion of reducing sections, reducing head cap, and take it out of the high-level district-wide, take it down to the classroom level. So while by ratios and cap sizes and so on and so forth, you could get 22, 23, 24 students to a teacher, I'll tell you that in William Mason, those 22, 23 students will be 19 boys for one poor teacher who's going to age about five years in one, in one calendar year. So this is the reality. So I really do ask, and again, looking at the slides, I didn't get all the budget detail, looking at the slide, it appears as though we were quick to cut teachers, as opposed to perhaps other areas in the budget that could take a haircut. Second year now, I've seen mulch on the William Mason playground. We don't have playground mulch in William Mason, we have a blacktop in the playground. So, you know, I look at this and I say, wow, it feels as though we're hitting the teachers first. And that is troublesome as a parent, and again, as I say, knowing the teacher who are the interface to the students and what brings them along. So I appreciate, I appreciate you there.
Hi, I'm Joy Howard. So yes, I just wanted to reiterate what he had said about the class size. Yes, we are under the class size, but last year, we had two first-grade classes, we ended up getting a bunch of kids in November, which made it impossible for us to split it into three at that point. We had 18 boys in one class, and I believe it was 11 or 12 in the other class. The teachers did a marvelous job, they were able to learn. It wasn't that they weren't able to learn, but I can tell you that the stress level for my child that was in the class, I had 18 boys, his physician said this year, when he did his checkup, he said, there's a difference in him. He's less stressed. Do you know what it is that did, that made it that way? And I said, I know what it is. He's split into three classes, and he doesn't have 18 boys in his class. So I understand why we can have 25 kids in a class, but if we get an influx, we are right at the cusp on most of our classes that I have here. We're at 45, 50, 49, 46. So if we get any new kids into the district past September, we're going to be at our limit, and our kids are going to take the hit. We also don't want to lose the teachers that know our kids, that parents like, they're good teachers. We've invested money in them in the last couple of years that they've taught at William Mason and the other schools, the other elementary schools. And I guess we feel to let one go just to find out halfway through the school year, wow, we're going to need somebody else. May not be this year, but it's going to be the following year. So if we can find a way to keep our teachers, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shaja Sai, and I live in Old Lane, and my child also goes to William Mason, but I am also a life partner at Montpel. I graduated Montpel High School in 1988. And so I've been through this, and I understand, it's always about numbers, I understand it's always this. My only request is for you guys to really go beyond the numbers and take a look, because we have a very unusual situation at William Mason, where two-thirds of the kids are boys, small boys, small children, with very small lines. And the unfortunate part is the girls would have better set lines, we don't have them to balance that. If we end up cutting a teacher, would it be possible then, for those of us who are on the cusp of where William Mason is, would it be a consideration for we would be able to transfer kids or transfer children? I was someone who was lived on Brittany, and I ended up going to Woodmont because of the situation. And I know that's something the Board doesn't like, so, you know, we're willing to get it, but at the same time, we'd really prefer to keep our teachers, and if there's any way for me to cut something out or decrease something from somewhere, to keep our teachers, that would be super helpful. We're also at the point where our first-rate year for our children was super, super difficult for all of us, not just for the teachers, but for the parents, because it made it really tough to have anything happen. And it's because, not because the teachers weren't effective, but because it was just way too many boys. Even now, there's still too many boys. So please take consideration for those of us who are going through it. I get it, it's a numbers game, but if there's any way to look beyond that, just see what the balance is, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can make just one comment. And I certainly can't make any educational decisions about class size, I just, one thing for everybody to keep in mind, Jim was good enough to give me statistics. We spent, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, probably, weren't for the fact we spent approximately $750,000 this year in unfunded mandates of park, and next year replacing provokes, we're turning up another $175,000. So, you know, that's where your tax money is going, and it doesn't help you, but hopefully it'll help you when you go to ballot box, decide if you're going to vote for it.
Well, that's mentioned stated, which is half the point, usually it would pass five or six years to about $11 million in lost funding for Montpel. Okay, on that, others, no business administrators report? I'll ask if the Board doesn't mind to hold committee and other reports for tonight, since we do have a second closed session and the hour's getting late. I will open it up to the public for anything on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, closing participation.
Which is the cohort at William Mason, who's present?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I said that again.
What is the grade present that we're, that?
So the present grade, the present grade is grade one, heavily Mason, where there's two classes, two sections, and my proposal is to move those children into, to stay two sections, which is a grade three. The present grade three, I'm sorry, the present grade two, has three sections. So that's where a section would decline.
So that first grade section of William Mason, do we know how many students there are there? How far from the?
The most recent information I have is that there's 23 students in one class and 22 in the other. So 45 first graders, that would become 45 second graders into two sections. Right now, there are three sections of grade two presently at, at William Mason. We'll be reducing those three sections of grade two to two sections.
And if you want that to 45, I forget what the number is for the class-size policy. Is it 25 for our third class?
The limit can go to 46. If it goes to 47, I believe we need to create an initial section.
I'm sorry, I have a little question. The second grade, fourth grade, present grade, Mason, how many children are there?
In second grade?
Yes.
There are 50 in three sections. And they'll become three sections of grade three. Just to get just unclear, first grader now, how many kids, how many sections? Forty-five children, two sections. How many first graders are going to be next year? Looks like 31. First graders? Next year, yes. We only have 31 children in kindergarten. Okay. So that means that only two sections of both first and secondary sections. Correct. So the next year, while we never can predict with accuracy the enrollment coming in, we do have trends, so if we have two sections of kindergarten next year, we have two sections of grade one, and then also two sections of grade two. It's in grade two that the proposed decrease is occurring.
It's in the present grade two?
It's in the present grade two, because there are three sections of grade two to accommodate 50 children. We're proposing that only two sections are needed for the 45. There are two sections presently in first grade.
All right, so this is, I guess, what I want to understand, because I think there's a combination of concerns, it's based on the parents that are assigned, the current second grade, the board, how does the reduction of sections, and the present first grade will want to see it like what it is.
Well, it's the same, it's the same problem, so to speak. I mean, in other words, it's the two sections of, the, I believe, I don't want to speak for our parents, but I believe our parents of first graders would like to see the 45 children split into three sections, and thus not lose a section of second grade. Want that to be accurate?
No.
No.
Not necessarily, but right now, we're.
Can you just come to my place? Do you know how much participation is lost?
I just wanted to clear up the numbers, because my name is Rachel Davis, I have twins in the first grade at William Mason. We currently have two first-grade classes, three second-grade classes, three third-grade classes, two fourth grade, and two fifth grade.
Yes, that's what I have as well.
So decreasing, decreasing, getting rid of one teacher will eliminate the third grade that's currently split into three classes right now, will move up to two?
No. It is eliminating one section from the present grade two.
Right, so if the current grade two moves up to the current grade three, where there's three classes, and then the current grade three moves up to the current grade four, there's only two classes, so you would be decreasing the current grade three from three classes to two classes.
Year after, yes.
This next year, in the fall?
Yes. Well, no, so, let me start again. So right now, we have two sections in grade one. They would become two sections in grade two, and the section in grade two would be eliminated. That would be the only proposed change right now.
Well, but if there's.
Two, four grades.
But the, the first grade would stay, the first grade split would stay the way it is.
Correct.
Two classes go to two classes.
Correct.
The second grade split at three classes would stay the way it is to go to three classes.
Yes.
The current third grade is split into three classes, they would have to go to two classes if you're eliminating a teacher, because we only have two fourth grades right now. It's not possible to move three classes up if we're one teacher down.
The present third grade has three, how many fourth grade will you have next year for?
Right, right. If you move up the three third grade classes right now and keep the teachers as they are in fourth grade, you need to go from three classes down to two.
Right, but.
It's not even, forget about whether or not you change the current first grade classes right now, it's the third, it's the current third grade going into fourth grade that will end up losing a section and going from three classes down to two.
The total of third grade is 49, and the grade four is the maximum of .5. So we're one short.
So that's where I think the mix-up is, is that it's, leave out whether the current first grade goes from two to three or not, that you're decreasing the old.
You're correct.
I know it was over, sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
I want to say something in the public. Yes, but I'm going to limit this discussion for another three minutes.
Okay, my name's Andrea Swanson, I have twins in second grade right now, they're twin girls. So even though it looks like on paper, that, how many kids did you say are in the current second grade at William Mason? Fifty, okay, 38 of those approximately are boys. So, my daughter's in a class right now with approximately 16 students, she's one of four girls. So she has, you know, there's 12 boys in the class, her and three other girls. So even though, you know, I just, if you could take that into consideration also, and looking at the second grade at William Mason, that's great. I know on paper it looks like it's, you know, 50, but it's 50, 38 of those are boys, that's it. You know, my kids get lost in the shop.
Thank you.
But one thing, girls get lost in the shop, we can board just for the number of sections, you know, I like to make two or three girls in a class.
Yeah, the administration will, especially in light of the fact that there was some obvious confusion, will let the administration manage that. So, public participation is closed.
Agenda.
Agenda, well, that's closed as well. Right, have to be later. So, motions for J through O.
Hello.
Charlie and John. Any discussion on J? K? L? M? Hello? N, sorry, oh. Hi, girl call. Girl call. Who made the motion, Charlie? No, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Motrek?
Yes.
Ms. Morel, uh, Ms. Noving? Yes, Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Does anyone have a set B and M? Dr. Cave?
Yes.
Dr. Cortalito? Yes.
Good roll.
Thank you. Girl power, right. Okay, if we can hold our comments from the Board's perspective until the next time, I will open it up to public participation for Adam and Natalie Jennings.
Thank you. My name is Darius Malde, I'm the president of the Montpel Educational Foundation, and today I stand before you with two initiatives that we've started this year in Q1 2015, and I would just like to bring them to everyone's attention. We have started our enhancement of getting out into the community and have started Facebook. So we do ask that everyone goes onto Facebook, looks up the MAF Foundation and likes us. Over the years, we have given over $250,000 worth of grants to teachers in every single Montpel school, and continue to do that, and have quite a number of grants that are still before us today. Secondarily, we have launched a logo contest, which started on Monday, and so this has launched throughout the entire Montpel district, including St. Pius. Each of you, each parent should have received on Monday in their email blast, a copy of the logo contest criteria, release forms, as well as eligibility. And so we do ask for everyone to participate. Every student is asked to give consideration to it in grades K through 12, and we do want to just thank personally Dr. Freed and the support of each one of you here with the principals, especially in the art department, that this initiative has been brought forth. So we're really excited about having a logo attached to us, and by April, mid-April, we will have one. So for those parents that are still here, I have some information on it, would love to share it with you, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Darius. Okay, is anyone else in the public? Okay, I'll close all the participation, the Board is going to go into closed sessions for discussion of superintendent's survey, and when we come out, there will be no action taken. So, motion to close?
Totally.
Okay. Thank you.